Mayor Michaels, I think we're good to go.
So we are good to go now?
Yeah, I'm recording. We're recording.
Okay, I like in this meeting at six thirty nine council, we are still on the COVID nineteen business resilience support program report item. Counselor McGoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that counsel approved the COVID nineteen business resilience support program of $100,000 for a local business goods and services program funded by the emergency operations reserve with the grant criteria and eligibility as presented.
Thank you, Counselor McGoon. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Counselor Wa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I with the way this motion is worded, I just wanted to clarify with the grant criteria and eligibility as presented. Are we talking about just what is in the town report or also what community futures is proposing in their attachment?
Ms. Howard.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. To Counselor Wa, I will refer to, yes, Mr. Kovacs is still on the line or yeah, this is coming on. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Howard's through to Counselor Wa. Yes, my understanding is that we are presenting it. The attachment is there for for reference to be approved as is.
Counselor Wa.
No, that's great. I just wanted that clarified, just so we knew exactly what we were approving. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kovac. Counselor Wa. Counselor McGoon.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to just take a moment before we do vote on this to express my appreciation to Community Futures and administration for developing this essentially a very wonderful collaborative model to try and get, you know, those businesses that need it the most, that little bit of extra help through what's a difficult time. So Nancy I see on the screen, you know, thank you so much for the hard work and willing to be active partners in this. Again, you know, as I spoke to earlier with the other program, I think this is just part of a broad spectrum approach. I don't think any one size, you know, fits all approach is going to get everything we want it to. But certainly, this is a great approach to try and hit up a lot of our businesses. So thanks.
Thank you, Counselor McGoon. Counselor Nelson.
Does administration have the opportunity to come back to counsel quickly if the subscription isn't isn't significant? And the reason I ask, one of the comments that came up in our community futures meeting was it's a really small amount. I look White Court did 2000. So just in in the chance that people look at the application and say, it's just not worth it for 750 bucks. Can administration come back to us relatively quickly with maybe some modifications as we learn a bit?
Ms. Howard.
I will again refer to Mr. Kovac on the phone. We are to respond to that short order. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Howard's through to Counselor Nelson. Sorry. Yes, I believe and with Nancy on the line, it's it's important for her to be aware of that as well. I think that there is an opportunity for that. And the way that the whole the whole issue presented itself, and as we will work through this through the last two meetings, it's it's obvious that this was intended to be flexible based on the fact that we had discussed it could have a second intake. And so, in my opinion, we can, we can do it one of two different ways. We can have one intake and do the assessment or evaluation, and then move to a second intake with with new parameters, or we could simply adjust it. But I make the assumption that we would have to come back to counsel to move those motions because they're dollar, they're they're budget sensitive.
Perfect. I follow up. That's, that's exactly what I was looking for. Ms. Robbins has processed a few million dollars of loans over the last few months. So I imagine she'll have some pretty good real time feedback. And I just want to make sure that we're, we're ready in case it is the subscription level is is different than what we expect. So I'm excited about the opportunity for Community Futures to be, I guess that motion hasn't been made yet. So I'll wait for that until the next motion. So thank you. I'll be in full support of this.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. Counselor Hawes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate Counselor Nelson asking that question. I had the same conversations about, you know, potentially is 750 just enough and potentially could it be a span of, you know, at a minimum of 750 at a maximum of X amount of dollars potentially, you know, because some businesses I've heard have had added extra costs in some areas that could cover this versus other areas, especially to the, you know, whether it be to the COVID measures need to be taken place, you know, protective measures and things like that. Some businesses are smaller, didn't need as much larger. But knowing that, hearing that the answer to Counselor Nelson's question makes me more supportive of this now, knowing that we can pivot and make adjustments if necessary too. So, so thank you for that. And I will be in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawes. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Any further debate? Seeing none, I'll call to question that counsel approved the COVID nineteen business resilience support program of $100,000 for a local business goods and services program funded by emergency operations reserves with the grant criteria and eligibility as presented. Counsel, all those in favor? That's passed unanimously. Counsel, Counselor Nelson.
Like to move that counsel proved the town of Hinton entering into an agreement with Community Futures West Yellowhead to administer the COVID nineteen business resilience support program. And speaking as a board member, the the board was very much across the board happy with Community Futures taking that on. And a lot of that kind of hinged upon the staff of Community Futures being willing to take it on because they've they've taken on a lot over the last while. So I've been so impressed with the the level of work they've been able to churn through that office. And I think it's going to be a great partner to to carry this out. So thanks. Thanks to the team for stepping forward once again to to just keep going and keep doing whatever they can to keep businesses fluid. So thanks to the whole group and obviously Nancy Community Futures. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Counselor O'Staship.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. I'm fully in support of this. And I just wanted to take a second to point out that this is a really great example of how town administration can work with the other, some of the other community organizations to be able to bring some mutual benefit and some synergistic working. It's, it's, it's great. And I like to see this. I want, I'd like to see it more. And I just wanted to quickly express my appreciation personally to Community Futures West Yellowhead for being able to help out the town and be able to drive things forward. So thanks for that.
Thank you, Counselor Stashik. Counselor Hawes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I too, I just want to think, you know, I looked at the the criteria and just the professionalism efficiencies that are, you know, included in that bringing the community features, not the administration window, but you've this, you've been doing this for so many months. It was just a natural fit, obviously, being in our community for, you know, our businesses. So and that that partnership, you know, that you can, you know, on the fly come up with is fantastic. So I'm in full support of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawes. I'll try to say it in a different way. Nancy knows how great I think she is and her team. So this is just the right fit. And we really appreciate everything you've done. And we've spoke about it where Community Futures has kind of evolved in the last few years. And this is indicative of just another thing about stepping up to the plate. So, yeah, we really, really appreciate and look forward to the delivery of this program. Counsel, anything further before I call to question? Counsel Reese.
Thank you, sir. Nancy, because I have not spoken, does not mean I do not appreciate the great work that you do for our community and a whole bunch of other communities. And I truly will support this motion. And thank you again, dear lady.
Thank you, Counselor Reese. Counsel, anything further? Seeing none, I'll call to question that counsel approved the town of Hinton entering into an agreement with Community Futures West Yellowhead to administer the COVID nineteen business resilience support program. Counsel, all those in favor? That's passed unanimously. Counsel, anything further for this item this evening? Seeing none, thank you so much, Nancy. Enjoy the rest of your night. All right, with that, we will go to Hinton Golf Course Economic Opportunities. Ms. Howard.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. So once again, this this report too was present that's presented this evening was at the request of counsel to explore some economic opportunities around the Hinton Golf Course. So administration has provided counsel with three options to deliberate and including the benefits and challenges of each. So there's that idea of contracting out, have a society run, which is what we, the current arrangement is, we can do something that's town owned and town operated. So get it to the direct management of that facility and service, or we can explore some sort of privatized hybrid model. So we are proposing to undertake an expression of interest at this time to implement that process that it would also uphold the availability of golf in Hinton, which is, I know, important as a tourism and to our local residents, and make sure that that's a requisite component of that expression of interest. I would just draw your attention quickly. We don't spend lots of time on our report presentation, always on the risk and liability. But on page 115 of your package, just to maybe anticipate any questions on what's the risk of sort of doing this. And if we pursue this direction, it's, there is really minimal risk in doing that to the town and to the residents. It does function just to solicit basically that that best fit operating and does not bind the town to accept any of the expressions of interest submissions. There would be no action taken following that process unless it's directed by counsel. And that process focuses on, again, upholding the town golf in Hinton. And that's, if there's any other options on the lands, that can be achieved through a vending expression of interest as well. So the process would be, of course, we still intend to bring the information on the lands, the finances to counsel before the end of Q2. So sometime in June, the results of the expression of interest would come later in the summer. And then with that information combined, counsel would be able to provide some direction on the vision for this this facility in the community. I have Mr. Kovac and Mr. Russo joined to support me in answering any questions counsel may have.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Counsel, Counselor McGoon.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that counsel direct administration to undertake an expression of interest, EOI process, that upholds the availability of golf in Hinton as a requisite component of the EOI. And again, just to speak to it very briefly, your worship, we've been presented with this information, you know, through standing committee now, and finally up to regular council. We know that there's interest from various parties out there who want to present the town of Hinton, you know, with their potential visions and business opportunities for that particular area while maintaining the availability, the availability of golf for our residents. And really, I'm just excited to see what creative thoughts and processes and ideas exist out there that could benefit both the private industry and the community members as a whole. And I think this is that first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGoon. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor. Counselor Hawes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll be in support of this. I just have a question for administration. Just part of the, so we, I believe it's August 31st is the deadline to submit EOI's, correct? If I recall from the the report, what happens after that? Like, do does each group, they submit their EOI's? Do they meet with counsel? They do a, I guess, a pitch if, if, you know, I believe in in private, where we as counsel then can ask questions and stuff like that. Is that how it works after the submissions of the EOI if this is carried?
Ms. Howard.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. To Counselor Ha, I will revert this actually to Mr. Russo, if I may. Thank you.
Mr. Russo.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. And through the chair to counsel, to Counselor Ha's question, basically, what will happen is the information that you will receive from each proponent through the EOI, there will be proprietary information in that EOI, I would expect. And so it would be respectful to protect the confidentiality of each proponent's submission. So counsel would have the purview to be able to have a one on one discussion with each proponent that you so select to have one with, so that you can make an informed decision, once you have all the financial information, the land consolidation understanding, as well as what would best fit the town of Hinton.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Russo.
Thank you, Counselor Ha. Mr. Russo, I have Counselor Nelson then Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually won't be in support of this today. I think what we're missing here is having any sort of community vision for what the community is looking for and what the community wants from this property. I've had really unique feedback since before we had standing and and since then, and a lot of concerns that were raised. And I like the EOI process, but I think we should have a little bit better idea what we're looking for before we go down that path. If we're not willing to, if the community is not willing to entertain nine holes, or if the community is not willing to entertain removal of the holes along the highway for highway commercial, you know, we don't know what's happened with land consolidation. My fear is that we really try to put a square peg in a round hole, because we have the opportunity to do something right now. I also believe that without having it be almost turnkey, we are going to be offering this course up at a huge discount. And ultimately, our citizens invested a couple million bucks over the last few years of of loans and operating fees. And we owe it to our citizens to make sure we recover as much of that as possible. And putting out a an EOI for a chunk of of a golf course that we don't own the whole thing, they would then have to go and negotiate deals with private developers and provincial governments. I just don't see how we get the most interest and the most, the most opportunities for for our community without all of those things in place. And I don't want to work backwards on this like we have on other projects. And ultimately, those, those, some of those that we haven't done the work upfront have really bit us and been challenging for the community and ultimately created some barriers and some, some, some negative thoughts between the town and citizens, because they didn't feel like they were heard in the process. So with that in mind, I won't support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. Counselor Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So page 112, paragraph three. The last sentence talks about once counsel has clearly outlined their vision. So I'm thinking we need information on the land. We need information on the expression of interest. So can you break that down for me with a timeline as to when we will have that?
Ms. Howard.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. Counselor Reese. Yes, Mr. Russo and I chatted with regarding that in the past. And so I will get him to answer that question more succinctly than I may. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Through the chair to Counselor Reese. So the way we anticipate this to work, if this motion is indeed accepted tonight, that we would have the runway to be able to ascertain what the market could present in terms of options. The EOI is also intended that we can crystallize or maybe get a better vision for the golf course that will help counsel to determine what that vision could look like. In terms of the financial component, that is due to come back by the end of Q2 of 2021. And so as a result of that, you would understand what the current cost is to the community, what the cost has been in the past, what is the debenture cost available, and the duration of that. At the same time, the consolidation of lands or the fragmentation of lands as it stands right now will be highlighted in the EOI. And whereas administration and counsel will assist the preferred opponent to navigate those land acquisition and consolidation, should we still go for the eight year old golf course. So hopefully, that answers your question, Counsel Reese.
Counsel Reese.
I did miss the date. Did you give a date?
Yeah, I did. So the financial component and the consolidation of the lands, that information would come back to counsel by the end of Q2 2021.
So that would be the end of June, eh?
That would be the end of June.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Reese and Mr. Russo. I have Counselor McGoon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think it's important to highlight, you know, it's one thing for us as counselors or even, you know, council and citizens to sit around and go, well, wouldn't it be nice to have with our golf course? Well, that's really great that none of us who are involved in the businesses that may be interested in expressing a business vision for this are, you know, sort of formulating what we think their vision should be. We have no idea what the realistic business possibilities are until we ask the businesses who might be interested, what's your vision? Right? Again, we can't co-opt a business into getting involved based on our vision. We have to offer them the ability to come to counsel, to come to administration in a safe environment where their intellectual property is protected, to say, hey, have you ever thought about doing this with the land that you're now involved with? That's what the EOI process is going to permit, right? And that's an essential part of moving forward. Otherwise, we're just kicking around staring at our golf course going, well, wouldn't it be lovely if somebody did something for us without giving them any input first? And so that's why this is a vital first step in moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGoon. Counselor Hawes.
Thank you. And I appreciate the counsel, again, the same notion. Plus, it's still privy to counsel. So it's still our decision, you know, but I think it's important that we, we haven't had this conversation as to what that vision might look like and what, like you said, people can bring to us, you know, and, and I, I'm, you know, from obviously, nothing concrete have heard that there are visions out there people have to share with us. And I'm quite excited to hear what those might be, which then will help us as counsel move forward as a direction and reach out to our community members as well to get, you know, is any of those visions that are presented to us, obviously in private, but do they, any of them coincide with some of the visions that are out there in the community as well? And ultimately, hopefully hit, you know, where where our community and these businesses want to be. So, yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to the, the opportunity to hear what those those ideas are, you know, and, you know, and I think too, knowing it's no secret about the lands. And it's been no secret about that, where people still are willing potentially to come forward with with options that are willing to. So I, again, am supportive of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawes. Counsel. Well, I'll be speaking in favor of this. I think many municipalities, whether it's in Alberta or other parts of the country, struggle when they believe they know better than the market. The market is the key word. I think Counselor, Mr. Russo said that and Counselor McGoon elaborated on it. These are the people who are going to give us not, it's not our job. We are not the experts. We are the furthest thing from the experts. Let's find out what the market has to offer and then position ourselves, whatever that may be. There is zero risk to the municipality and it gives us options. This might seem so unfamiliar, because it's, it's, it's the process, I think, that we've been yearning for. This is, this is how things move forward. So I do appreciate Mr. Russo and his insight regarding this. And we can pivot at any point in time. But to me, this is going in the right direction. We'll have ample, ample amount of time to talk to our citizens, whether they're, they love golf or not, whether they're into commercial investment or not. There is a long list of things to do. So I, I will strongly support this as this is actually, I believe, one of the most tangible things that the communities are asking us to do. They want our counsel to have a vision. And we're doing something visionary. We're going down the path of of change, potentially changing the golf course for the better of our community with added assets. This is, I believe, why we get elected to do these things today. So to me, I think this is a, a great thing to support today. So I'll be strongly in support. Counsel, anything further? Seeing none, I'll call to question that counsel direct administration to undertake an expression of interest process that upholds the availability of golf in Hinton as a requisite component of the EOI. Counsel, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried six one. Counselor Nelson.
So that question for clarification, now the decision's been made. How do we market this opportunity for an expression of interest so that it does go out to the entire market, so that the entire market can come with their visions for our counsel, rather than just, you know, a couple people that have have expressed to members of council administration that they have an interest?
Ms. Howard.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. To Counselor Nelson. I will invite Mr. Russo to share his great plan with you.
Thanks, Ms. Thanks, Ms. Howard, through to the chair to counsel. So we would be using online platforms. The one that comes to mind that we typically use for our tender process for anything above 75,000 is the APC, the Alberta Purchasing. Now, that is not global. We will look at other opportunities, maybe through tourism, what platforms they have. So Mr. Kovac and I will be looking at making sure that this is wider than Alberta, wider than Canada potentially, so that we can at least have the net thrown wider. And the reason I say that, the reason August 31st is on the table to to have everything wrapped up, so that we can have this runway to ensure that we net as many proponents that can give us the widest, broadest vision that can help us to make the best decision.
Perfect. Thank you. Counsel, anything further for this action item this evening? Seeing none, just give me one quick moment. Seeing none, we'll move to our last action item for this evening, which is the rescind counsel motion, MD 2050 infill policy. Ms. Howard.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. So yes, the MD 2050, that is an outstanding motion from the council action pending list. At the time, it directed administration to bring back an infill development policy to standing committee by March of this year. Administration is now proposing in support of the attachment from Counselor O'Stashik to reconsider that approach. And specifically that the MD 2050 motion be rescinded and that we recommend that the infill design guidelines perhaps are better embedded in the form of the appendix day as a new directive. The appendices would be removed from the current municipal development plan, and a new overarching policy would be that would eventually be approved by counsel. So I do have Ms. Walker and Mr. Russo here to answer any questions that counsel may have. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Counsel. What would we like to do with this? Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question. So back in August of 2020, we met with planning and development twice. We met with, we had a big meeting in August, talked about the importance of having a policy for infill. Okay. We made the motion, wanted this to come back in the first quarter of 2021. It came back to us with administration saying, we're not going to bring you a policy. We would like to have a directive instead. So I'm going, that's odd. In my, my way of thinking, we made a motion, we wanted the policy to come back, and we didn't get what we asked for. So can someone kind of speak to that? And I want you to know, I'm saying this respectfully. I truly am. It's just odd that how much work was done to prepare to bring a policy back to us? When did you discover that you weren't going to bring a policy to us? And we're six months in. So.
Thank you, Mayor Michaels. To Counselor Reese. I know that at that time, leadership in the planning and development area had proposed very strong direction and supported counsel's decision to to go in this direction. Since then, Mr. Russo has taken a look at this process and and, um, they are offering an alternate option for council, uh, at this time, and I would like to invite, uh, Mr Russo to speak to that further. Thank you.
Mr Russo?
Thank you, Mayor Michaels, through to the chair to council. I, I will take this one on the chin council because when I came on board, I was not aware that you've had so much background work done to it and what the persuasion was for a policy. When I looked at this with a fresh set of eyes and I listened to, you know, council regularly and I talked to my to, to my team and Ms Walker as well, we realized that if we wanted to be nimble, cut the red tape, serve our community with flexibility, that would be better served through a guideline versus a policy that in my view, that if it wants a policy is made by council, we have to bring it back. So I haven't talked to Ms Walker about this. She came up with some ideas as to how we could append this to the to, to the L U B and various options to the M V P, how we could do things. So when I came on board, I made the suggestion. Ms Walker agreed with me and we talked to, uh, C A O Olsen and she said, well, that's actually a good idea. Let's bring it to council. So I was the architect of changing the hard work you've done in the past to making this recommendation that we had back in early April.
Councillor Race?
Good, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Race. Thank you, uh, Mr Russo for that. Councillor Hawes?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, uh, Mr Russo for those comments, because as I was looking through this and thinking of the last conversation and, and, and just recently attending the A U M A, uh, cau- leaders caucus, how the reduction of red tape is so important to our communities. And I started to, you know, see that this particular item was, was geared towards that. Uh, it hit a lot of the, the key where reducing the red tape, reducing the, the, also experiencing the guidelines, uh, you know, to, to our land use bylaw and to specifically to, uh, to infill design. So, um, I think, you know, this is a step in the right direction. No, you know, disrespect to the work that was done, but you know, I think this is the, the trend in which we are moving, the municipalities need to move towards to, to get rid of some of that red tape for our, our developers in our community. So, um, I really appreciate, you know, the work, uh, even though I realize, yeah, that work was done, but this isn't right, step in the right direction as I see. So, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hawes. Council, uh, did we want to put forward a motion? Any other questions, debate? Councillor Hawes?
I'd like to move that council rescind motion, M D twenty fifty as per council action pending list and instruct administration to embed infill design guidelines in the form of appendix A as part of a new directive. Thank you, and I've already spoke to it. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Hawes. Council, we have a motion on the floor. Councillor Nelson?
Like to move split.
And at, uh, I assume I know where, but where would you like it to be split, councillor Nelson?
At, at the end.
Yeah. And motion to split is not debatable. We will, uh, take care of the first part of the motion. Councillor Nelson, did you want to speak to that?
Uh, sure. Um, I, I won't be in support of this. I, I look at the reasons that a policy was required. It was to give administration the freedom to, to, to do so. I don't see exceptional circumstances that really warrant, uh, it to come back. I think, uh, a high level policy can be some, a very simple document that just says this council wants to explore unique opportunities with infill development. That's not red tape. That is giving administration the tools to go out uh, and, and work with developers and with, with no direction from council at all, um, on infill. It I, I, I'm afraid we're going to just come back to this again, which is what we faced a, a few months ago and, um, it I, I, I think, I think our leadership as a council and our directions and motions and policies need to need to withstand the, the test of time and turnover within administration and, um, w- we can't just change every time we have um, a change in administration. And I've, I've loved having Mr Russo around. His experience is, is, is huge, um, as was Mr Vanas. And, and so I think we need to, to, i- if we're gonna make a motion, we need to support it and need to be willing to support it and see it through, um, uh, even if it doesn't. Um, e- even if the, the context changed a little bit, I think infill was important to this council six months ago. And if infill is still important to this council now, then we should continue with developing a policy and not rescind uh, a motion. So unless I know why infill is not, no longer important to our council, I don't see the benefit of rescinding this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nelson. Council. Uh, I'll be in support of this. Uh, I, I, I think infill is really important, so I, I, I don't agree that this does, this does not mean that we don't think infill is important. I think there's, uh, two ways to get, uh, to where we want to go, uh, and I'd argue that there's many more ways. Uh, and it's, it's democracy, it's the will of council. Uh, I love that administration brought forward an alternative and is up to us to decide whether we want to stay status quo or not. It's within our purview. Uh, but as the first vote was, uh, the purview of council, so is this one. And I, I support this change. I really appreciate the work Mr Russo, uh, has done in his team, uh, sorry, not just Mr Russo, uh, and, uh, I have got no negative feedback about this change and, but I do encourage council, if, if we're hearing from developers or people in our community who are against this, uh, then we should be discussing the merits of what those actionable things are that are going to impede developers in infill. Uh, but I haven't heard any. Uh, they, they've liked this. They've liked their interactions with, uh, uh, our department, uh, more and more as we move along with this. So uh, I, I'll, I'll support this. Uh, I, I think it's a, it's moving in the right direction and I appreciate, uh, uh, stream, uh, streamlining this uh, with the staff that we currently have right now, uh, to better work with, uh, our partners in the community. Council, uh, any other debate or questions regarding this, uh, first part of the motion? Which is that council rescinds motion, M D twenty fifty as per council action pending list? Seeing none, I'll call to question that council rescind motion, M D twenty fifty as per council action pending list. Council, all those in favor? Opposed? That's a carried five, two. Uh, we have our second motion on the floor right now to instruct administration to uh, embed infill design guidelines in the form of appendix A as of a new directive. Council, any questions or debate? Councillor Nelson?
Are directives and guidelines, um, something that administration is hoping that council gets, uh, involved with as we move forward?
Ms Howard?
Thank you, Mayor Michael, through to councillor Nelson. Um, I believe our, our policy, uh, structure that we've created, uh, does create some sort of distinction between what sort of things come to council and approved at a policy level and then the directives um, and the sort of supporting documents underneath there, um, are developed and, uh, at, at an administrative level. In this case, I will invite Mr Russo or Ms Walker to speak to that directly if we are doing anything different than what we, um, our, our protocols are in our organization now.
Mr Russo?
Mr Mayor, through to council. So I'll invite Ms Walker as well to add anything after I've just finished mine sort of short, uh, and C E S, uh, to councillor Nelson, that the guidelines are meant so that we as administration have wider ability to work with our developers and to ensure that we can get things done in a more agile, nimble, cut the red tape approach. And so that is the, the character of a guideline or a directive, so that's at an administrative level. And if Ms Walker has anything to add, I'd be happy to comment.
Thank you, Mr Russo. Uh, you are correct. My understanding with the policy eleven oh six that was created uh, is that directives fall under the approval of the C A O level. Uh, and then the policy is, um, the approval is with council. Thank you.
Councillor Nelson?
Yeah, if, if I could follow up, I, to me, we rescinded the infill policy. To me, that's where we leave it as a council. Um, to give direction to do something that's not our purview, I don't think is a habit. Um, I, I, I think we should subscribe to and in my experience, uh, especially lately working with, uh, the wetland policy, the the policy is not the red tape. It's the, it's everything that falls under it that the red tape comes in. It's those guidelines and regulations and that's the, the red tape part. So I think in the spirit of reducing red tape, I think we wait for that high level policy to, to come forward and allow administration to, to do their work um, underneath a, a future policy that we, um, we approve and to, to give direction to, um, to build guidelines within a policy that doesn't exist yet. I think it's just not a, a great practice. Uh, and it is likely to get lost in, in the shuffle to, um, a- anyways, because we don't have a policy that it's, uh, falling under. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nelson. Council. Councillor Hawes?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. And I, I guess I, I see that this is an opportunity. There was a concern earlier that council was not, uh, interested or, or in infill design and any, and this directs, you know, administration, make sure this is embedded in those directives that we are, you know, as a council, you know, infill is important in our community and we want to instill that that's, you know, and, and administration is saying, we want to be able to embed this in there. We're supporting that as a, as a council. So, um, you know, I think there's nothing wrong with that. I think it, it won't get lost then. It's a, it's a motion of council that they make sure that they're in the, in the, uh, uh, in the, in those guidelines. So, uh, I'm, I'm gonna be in support of this, of course, as I made the motion. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hawes. Council, councillor Ostachik?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the, the comments by councillor Nelson about, um, uh, council getting too comfortable directing administration to follow through on things that aren't particularly right, fully within council's purview. However, I think in this case, I would make an exception, and the exception being I don't want to get infill policy or I don't want to get, um, uh, infill lost, uh, moving forward. I want to make sure that there is an outstanding direction from council to administration to make sure that it is addressed in upcoming documents, specifically because it is so important. Now, now that there isn't a policy, which I agree with, because I think that the, uh, that the process that's laid out by administration here is cleaner, better, neater, easier. Uh, and that's why I support it, but I do want to make sure that that direction, uh, stays, uh, on the table and valid that, uh, administration has to bring infill back in, in a future document. That's why I'll be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ostachik. Council, you have a motion on the floor. Any further debate? Seeing none, I'll call to question the second part, uh, to instruct administration to embed infill design guidelines in the form of appendix A as part of a new directive. Council, all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried six, one. Council, anything further for this action item for this evening? Seeing none, we are done our action items. That'll bring us to our information item for this evening. Council, any questions or I'll, uh, accept a, a direction? Councillor Hawes?
Sorry about that. Um, just one thing before I, I, I do make the motion to accept them, the information, but just wanted to make the community aware and highlight that this Saturday, um, the shredded day is coming to Hinton. Um, you know, brought to by the Rotary, I believe, club. Um, I think this is a fantastic idea. I appreciate the fact, you know, uh, the letter that we received in regards to, uh, um, sensitive information that, you know, our, our, our recycling depot, of course, you know, take it, but people seeing, you know, potentially some of that. So I appreciate them bringing uh, the shredded day to, to Hinton. Uh, it's on May eighth, uh, this Saturday, uh, eleven A M to three P M at the Parks West Mall. So I just want to encourage people to, uh, go out and utilize that. It looks like there's a cost of fifteen dollars per banker box, uh, is suggested, but they understand that, you know, if they can't afford it, uh, the cost will be encouraged, still bring your papers and they'll be shredded. So I, I just wanted to highlight, uh, that in our, uh, packages. And on that note, I'd like to move that, uh, we accept council information packages, number one, number two, number three, and number four of May fourth, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, councillor Hawes. Council, we have a motion on the floor. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call to question all those in favor. That's passed unanimously. That'll bring us to our reporting for this evening. I will start at my top right. Councillor Magoon?
Uh, thank you. Nothing to report, you wish.
Thank you, councillor Magoon. Councillor Hawes?
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things. Um, library pushing on, pushing forward, programs online. Um, you know, continue curbside, uh, things of that nature, still, uh, offering computer laptop usage, uh, signage, signing it out. Um, so if you have any questions, contact the library. They've also taken upon themselves, uh, were, uh, distributing the comm serve around the community. You might have noticed in some of the newsstands and grocery stores. Uh, but some of the feedback was some residents, uh, don't get that information, you know, via, uh, electronically. So the library's taken upon themselves to make some copies uh, and distribute them around the community for those that may not, uh, have, uh, have the electronic availability. So, um, so just another way that our library's trying to support mi- members of our community. Um, just also want to mention, uh, waste management. Uh, we had our, all our interviews and tomorrow we have our first, uh, working group as a, as a board with the contractor and we're moving forward in the, you know, where the future of governance looks like in, in our wasteland field. So that's all I have to report. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hawes. Councillor Nelson?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Um, we had a community futures, uh, West Hill Head board meeting. Uh, we've already touched on some of what we discussed. Um, beyond that, uh, the chamber A G M was on the twenty second as well. They have a, a full board once again and uh, I'll, I'll leave it to Mayor Michaels, maybe to, to thank their outgoing president. Uh, and beyond that, just on the Rotary shredded event, uh, I would say stay tuned to the Rotary Facebook page. I'm not certain what, uh, these new restrictions will mean, and I'm guessing, uh, I, I'm on that committee. I'm guessing we'll probably meet tomorrow or the next day to determine whether it's still viable with the new provincial restrictions. So, um, fingers crossed, because I know a lot of people were, uh, waiting for that with their spring cleaning. So, uh, not, nothing to report, Mr Michaels.
Uh, thank you, councillor Nelson. Councillor Waugh?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, had Community Futures as well, and that's already been well covered with our agenda items tonight. Uh, so yeah, nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Waugh. Councillor Ostachik?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Thank you, councillor Ostachik and councillor Race.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I attended an ASH meeting and at this ASH meeting, they discussed, um, strategies and how to generate money. And I will have more information on that when I attend the next ASH meeting. Another thing that I'm really excited about is our, um, youth advisory, um, committee that I'm on. We have split up into little groups and the group that I'm with, working with two wonderful students and they are offering to teach seniors or older people how to use a computer, how to use a phone, how to redo your browser, how to get on, um, Instagram. So it's just wonderful. So I'm really looking forward to, um, to continuing my work with that group. And that's it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Race. Uh, on councillor Nelson's point, a huge thank you to Tracy Shepherd and her uh, commitment to the Hinton Chamber of Commerce, uh, throughout her years, uh, three new members. Uh, and if you were part of the A G M, they will be selecting their chair, uh, in the coming weeks. I don't have an exact date. Perhaps councillor Nelson knows that exact date. Uh, but, uh, they'll be appointing someone, uh, then. Um, it was, uh, a, nice to see Minister Schweitzer, uh, take part, uh, in the conversation in, in our area. Some pretty good questions regarding, uh, wh- what is the, what is the future of, uh, uh, their plan for Hinton? Well, I guess they, they have a broader plan for the province of Alberta, investing in it. Uh, it was a lot of hu- the kind of high levels. Uh, I think it's, uh, it's imperative for municipalities to really kind of tap into the provincial government and know how they could, uh, take advantage of, of their long-term plan to, uh, to, uh, kind of rebuild or, or reposition Alberta in, in a place. So, uh, but it's always, uh, nice to get that one-on-one time with, uh, the minister. Um, uh, Mr Kovac, uh, has been meeting up. Uh, there, there's a possibility, although today's news with COVID isn't as good, but there's some appetite by Wild Mountain to potentially have something, if allowable, uh, later in the summer and the fall. So just an update, nothing, uh, said by any means, uh, but you might be hearing more of it, especially if, uh, you know, uh, things relax, uh, in, in the summer months. Uh, I had a great conversation with our C A O. And the National Police Federation, they are, uh, obviously advocating, uh, quite hard to keep the R C M P, uh, in, uh, you know, uh, in Alberta. And there's a lot of support. Uh, wh- what I did focus the conversation on was the communities that are struggling with their R C M P. We have a great relationship with the, with ours and many communities do. Uh, in, in one of the conversations was, uh, the, kind of the, the regional manager. I, I forget the exact title, but a lot of communities might have some issues, uh, or, or not a perfect working relationship. You could, you could simply also have these, these yearly meetings with your regional manager and your staff sergeant, build that relationship and, and kind of work on goals together. And, and, and that was kind of my comment. I have, I've never met ours, uh, and, and, and Miss Olson was unaware of who this person was. Uh, although we're in a good position, I, I said, that was a feedback I kind of gave that. Perhaps we should also be advocating to building the relationships in communities, uh, with our R C M P. So we can keep them. Because, uh, there's strong appetite, uh, but this will be revisited in many years if, um, things don't get kind of settled. So how do we improve the relationships? Let's not just focus on keeping the R C M P. Let's keep them and work. So, uh, interesting conversation in, uh, C A O Olson, when she returns, may have, uh, added comments to that. Uh, also had an opportunity to meet our new A H S site manager, uh, Gail Hutchings, uh, amazing, uh, woman. Uh, you, you have to meet her really, um, uh, yeah, you, you have to meet her. She comes with a lot of experience, uh, very, um, intelligent, uh, dynamic, uh, uh, please reach out to her, uh, say hellos, but Gail Hutchings, our new A H S, uh, site manager. And that covers it for me. Uh, counsel, any urgent matters for this evening? Seeing none, I will go to our C A O officer. But before I hand it over to, uh, Ms. Howard, I do want to thank her for, uh, on the spot, uh, kind of short notice, uh, uh, done a wonderful job tonight. Uh, we appreciate you stepping in for Miss Olson, uh, who we hope to get back, uh, real soon. But, uh, thank you for tonight and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor Michaels. Um, I do have four items to share with council. Um, as there's a bit of buzz already about the new director of protective services that was hired, uh, fire chief, um, Maurice, uh, Bo Draw, I probably have pronounced his last name totally incorrectly, but I'm sure he'll correct us when he gets here. He goes by Mac. Um, he does have expensive, extensive work history in both fire and protective services, which, as you know, that, that's not a common combination everywhere. Um, so he will be able to provide excellent support to our fire rescue, our, uh, our community peace officers and our working relationship with the R C M P. So we look forward to welcoming him next week. I'm sure we will have him in front of council, uh, in no time and in front of the community. So we're looking forward to that. And I'd just like to let, uh, thank Brian, uh, Hall, who's been our interim fire chief, um, since the outgoing one. And he's really stepped up and that's, um, that's a lot of work and a lot of extra work. So thanks very much to Brian for that. Our youth center, um, our youth center coordinator, James Everett, he participates, um, and is quite well connected with, um, across the province when it comes to youth programming and ideas. And so we have confirmed through Alberta Health Services and the Biz Connect, which they refer us to, um, that we can offer in-person youth-focused programming indoors, um, that's related to their development and to host mutual support meetings, um, as long as we're following public health guidelines. So we know that there's been some announcements, well, we, we've been in this meeting. But once we get back to, um, the non-restricted that we've just been opposed us on us this night, um, the community will see some changes in the near future in our youth center, um, to provide some increased supports and programs and services for our youth, particularly those who have been struggling during the pandemic, um, and the fact that we've had to close and not be able to meet in person. Uh, the third one is the, uh, wildfire water tank, um, that most of you might notice on the intersection of Rob Road, Mount Street, Eaton Drive there. Um, it's now has its full deckles on there, uh, that looks really great. Uh, and just as a reminder, that, uh, water tank is a wildfire. It's used for emergency water supply, um, in the event of a wildfire, uh, that encroaches on our community. And this will be our, our, our fail safe for structural protection, sprinklers, for example. In the event that we deplete, um, our town water supplies, and it'll be a great addition to the use, um, during wildfire, pre-planning and emergency operations. So, um, I noticed it this morning, coming into the, uh, this evening. It's been a long meeting. No, it hasn't. Um, this evening, when I drove by, it looks really great. It's got a nice big logo on it. So, um, if anybody is wondering what's going on there, that's what that's for. And finally, I, I just want to give everybody, um, a heads up, both council and the community. We will see some activity on Rob Roads, uh, just south of the community. We have begun the Rob Road parking expansion project. Uh, you'll see, we've, uh, we'll be mobilizing, uh, today already. We're filling some early next week. We should have the project complete by the end of the month. Uh, we've had some great, uh, collaboration and energy with the Hinden Golf, Disc Golf Association, the Hinden Mountain Bike Association, uh, has done an immense amount of, of work, um, even before this project was sort of handed over to us with, uh, Alberta Transportation and, um, the, the province, Alberta Environment. And of course, all the great relationships that they have with the, the community and the businesses in town. And we have, um, I, I just can't say enough about how much work they've done, uh, with, uh, companies like McElhany and West Central contracted to get this project, uh, pulled together. Uh, even, you know, last week, we're, they're pulling in culverts onto site. Where, um, we have some expertise in, in volunteers around doing bird suite because it's that time of year. And I, really great job pulling us together and, and all the voces go out to them for sure. We do hope to have, um, a more comprehensive report come to council that celebrates how this project came together because it does look very different than the simple hundred thousand dollar parking lot that we kind of put in the budget this year. And, um, yeah, so again, thanks, thanks to them. Lots of contribution significance in both, um, reduction of costs, gift and kind, uh, coming from those companies and, uh, yet still to come, because we have a few other items that we're looking for, for materials. Uh, so that's going to be an important project. We should have that done before the busy season. We know that that's a hi- a safety hazard on Rob Road with the two main activities that are happening, uh, with disc golf and the mountain bike, uh, activities being so successful. Uh, so hopefully that'll address some of that before the, the main season. And, um, Mr. Russo, Russo, did you have anything you wanted to share with that?
I just wanted to bolster, thank you through the chair to council. Just wanted to bolster that there will be a communication piece going out to, to the community tomorrow morning, basically outlining much of what Miss Howard has just shared. So that was imperative for council to know before word gets out tomorrow morning that we starting work. So this is exciting going forward with all the groups. It's been a, a great success so far. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Russo and Ms. Howard, and thanks for bringing that up. Uh, Himba and, and Disc Golf, Jan and, and, and their team. Uh, they, they have great vision, drive, and I'm so happy that it's coming to fruition. Uh, I, I've always said, uh, groups like that really, uh, are the heart and soul of our community and they get things done. And I'm glad that the town of Hinton was able to work with them. Uh, great, uh, great, great progress. Really happy. Uh, this is how it ought to be and, and, and the success is, uh, is, is showing. So, uh, really happy for that update. Uh, with that, the administrative inquiries. Wendy, are there any today?
There are none.
The council, any notices of motion? None. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Counsel Nelson.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Counsel Nelson. Counsel, all those in favor? That's passed unanimously. Thank you, everyone.